All right. We recognize that the Hogan Administrative Center occupies the land of the Ho'ang people. Please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Ho'ang land and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Yeah.
Ms. Baumann? I'm going to take that as you hear. Ms. Burkertal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burkertal?
Excused.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Here.
Dr. Garcia?
Here.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Corburg?
Excused.
Mr. Spivey?
Excused.
A quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of August 1st, 2022 is called to order, and we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we could please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the Board, and I would entertain a motion at this time with a second to approve the agenda as submitted unless there's a motion to amend.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay. So with a motion by Dr. Cooper Stoll and a motion, excuse me, a second by Dr. Garcia, we will approve the agenda as presented. Did not hear a motion to amend, just making sure one last time. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion has carried, and Ms. Baumann, I promise that I will remember that you are online and take a little bit longer to wait for you to respond, I apologize. All right, next will be our public speakers. It is the policy of the Board to provide at its public meetings an opportunity for individuals to address the Board. Comments about individual staff and personnel will not be allowed. Open meeting law prohibits the Board from engaging in discussion or responding to matters not included on the agenda. All speakers are reminded that this same policy limits your time to speak to five minutes. This limit will be strictly enforced, and I'll ask the Superintendent to keep track of the time and to please notify the Speaker when the time is running out. Thank you. You're also asked to give your name and the school district where you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record, and our first speaker tonight is Brock Harney.
Hi there. My name is Brock Harney for you, Dodomi. I reside in the town of Campbell, school is for La Crosse. Wanted to speak today about a concern I had about our high school consolidation plan, both under the referendum plan as well as the alternative plan if the referendum were to fail. My concern is that that plan disrupts high school students' ability to engage and invest in their school communities, and it threatens connection between our high schools and our neighborhoods. Students that are engaged or invested in the school community in a variety of ways have better outcomes. They attend school at a higher rate, they have more social support networks when challenges arise, they have more engagement with caring adults in a variety of authentic settings. Increased opportunities, often through co-curricular experiences, allow a safe environment where students experience success, failure, overcome adversity, and build lasting friendships with their peers. We saw the importance of this engagement during the pandemic where some students abruptly fell off a social cliff when these opportunities were absent for their lives. My personal concern while I'm speaking here tonight and for my kids that go to our schools is that our plan for high school consolidation appears to disregard the importance of that close connection between the school and community. Increased school size and distance to school adds barriers to participation, especially among higher need and historically marginalized groups within our district that stand to benefit most from added engagement with the school community. To use a government teacher analogy, as I am one, if you close the polling place in a neighborhood that already experiences challenges and you move it across town, you decrease the chance of that group voting and becoming civically engaged. Closing a high school and moving it across town has the exact same effect. It disrupts the feeling of community among whole neighborhoods. The referendum question presents a consolidation option to voters, the stakeholders that should be the ones making the decision that's impactful. To many of these stakeholders' surprise, including myself, the recent district's stance in the newspaper on the district's website suggests that regardless of passage, the district is proceeding with consolidation and the closure of Logan High School as if there were no other alternatives that meet the needs of the district. Structuring this decision this way is effectively taking decision-making power out of the voters' hands over a generational change to our city and our school district. That feels wrong. The two options appear to be, one, pass the referendum for the consolidated high school construction in Shelby, or two, we're going to force your kids into central high school even though we know that plan creates more challenges, effectively making the kids pay for the adults' inability to find workable alternatives. This feels like the wrong way to approach this impactful change. As a parent of students in our district, am I supposed to vote for this referendum or else? Am I supposed to vote for consolidation for my kids' high school or the school gets consolidated anyway? Did the Board take a vote on that? I think some clarification is required because that's a community-level decision that should be determined by voters or their representatives. During informational sessions early in the process, there were options of maintaining two high schools and consolidating two direct feeder middle schools as the oldest building in the district is the Lincoln Middle School site. Why wouldn't these options be the alternative plan? They're clearly less disruptive and appear to solve the budget issues, never mind being the best option for our kids. I've had colleagues from other districts joke with me about distributing open enrollment materials to students on the northern end of our district. They see our consolidation as a potential boon for them as surrounding districts. Open enrollment is not a major factor in our declining enrollment today, but relocating a high school 15 or 20 minutes south of where it currently stands is likely to change that. If decline in enrollment is a primary driver of budget woes, I cannot think of a good reason why we should pursue consolidation that increases the chance of losing enrollment to surrounding districts, especially to the north. I think we need to respect the voters on this. If the voters approve the new high school at referendum, then the voters have spoken, the district should proceed with its plan. I hope the Board will reconsider high school consolidation if the referendum were to fail. The notion that the Board would feel comfortable proceeding with high school consolidation contrary to the voters' wishes without serious consideration of workable alternatives is really astonishing and deserves reconsideration. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rob Abraham.
Thank you, my name is Rob Abraham, I reside in the La Crosse School District. School Board President, Jimenez, parents, students, and staff of the La Crosse School District. Effective immediately, I am resigning my position on the La Crosse Board of Education amid serious concerns of the future of the La Crosse School District based in large part on the leadership of Superintendent Engel. Under the coherent governance model adopted and followed by the Board, the power in decision-making resides with the Superintendent. Boldly, it's a dictatorship. My views and approach to change do not align with Superintendent Engel and the other members of the Board. I understand that I stand alone. This Board and our community are facing difficult decisions to ensure a better education for our children as buildings age, enrollments decline, and funding is impacted. This will not be an easy process for anyone. In a recent email to all district staff and the Board, Engel stated that if the referendum for a new high school fails, quote, "We will have to fit all high school students into central high school without the collaborative classrooms, modern labs, and athletic facilities a new high school would provide," unquote. Wherever you stand on consolidating our high schools and in effect our middle schools, it's inexcusable to present this poor alternative to place pressure on the referendum. This comes not long after Engel proposed and the Board adopted less than half of what the teachers asked for and rightfully deserved for their annual pay increase. I cast the lone no vote to the 2% raise, but it made no difference. I hope our teachers know that I believe they deserve better. There are acceptable and unacceptable ways to research, plan, communicate, and ultimately decide on the future of our high schools and middle schools. This alarming alternative presented by Superintendent Engel to district staff has revealed the greatest instability facing the district. I cannot in good faith continue to serve with this leadership, direction, and tactics. My hope that by resigning and bringing forward the reality of the district leadership and how this Board has ceded its oversight and duties will provide some transparency to voters. Too many people have asked me how we vote out the Superintendent. You can't. What you can do is vote in Board members who will demand accountability. The future of our district is in the hands of voters. In November, they will weigh in on a referendum for a new consolidated high school, and in April, four Board seats will be up for election. Vote thoughtfully and carefully, our children depend on it. My experience on the Board has been, to say the least, eye-opening. Ironically, I leave the Board today feeling more impassioned about education and the operations that must change to enhance it. I also recognize that I cannot do this alone. To those who supported me, thank you. I did not envision this is how I would end my experience on the Board, but I can no longer be associated with this Board and Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abraham. We will move on the agenda to the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the Board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that the members want to remove from the consent agenda?
I make a motion to adopt items on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
With the motion by Dr. Cooper Stoll and a second by Ms. Leahy, the items on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda are approved as presented unless there's an objection. Is there an objection? Hearing no objection, those items are approved, and we'll move on to the Board Consent Agenda.
I make a motion to approve the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Cooper Stoll and a second by Ms. Leahy, the items on the Board Consent Agenda are approved as presented unless there's an objection. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, then the items on the Board Consent Agenda are approved as presented, and we'll move on to the Matters Reserved for Board Action, which is the 2021-2022 Fund Balance Designations, and this is to accept the final 2021-2022 Committed Assigned and Unassigned Fund Balance Designations as presented. Dr. Engel.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez. This is a process that we go through annually as prescribed by our monitoring in OE6 Financial Administration. I will turn it over to Ms. Spring. I think we have a delay in our ability to execute this.
I need to ask that this is removed from the agenda. We need to have our books closed in order to do this, and as of noon today, they still were not closed, so we would like to postpone that to August 15th meeting.
Okay. Then, without objection, we will table this conversation until the August 15th Board Meeting. Is there any objection to tabling this till the next Board Meeting? Hearing none. We will move on to our information portion of the agenda, and we will discuss Operational Expectation OE9: Communicating with the Public and Key Stakeholders Monitoring Report. And I will turn it over to Dr. Engel.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez. As with all of our OE monitoring, this is a part of our process as prescribed by coherent governance whereby the Board establishes expectations. We've developed our monitoring criteria, and then the Superintendent provides evidence that those monitoring criteria have been met. So I will walk us through OE9. OE9.1, the Superintendent will ensure the timely flow of information, appropriate input, and strategic two-way communication between the district and the public that builds understanding and support for district efforts. Indicator one is information to stakeholders will be done in a timely flow. Evidence is weekly updates to all families and staff were sent via email. Code of Rights and Responsibilities was distributed to all families and posted on the website, and that school board meetings were posted in a timely manner with all handouts and information available to the public. Indicator two, the Superintendent shall engage in two-way communication regarding the direction of the district and to build understanding and support for the district. Evidence includes the Superintendent met with the following stakeholders on at least a monthly basis: district-wide parents, Rotary Club, La Crosse Public Education Foundation, La Crosse Promise, NAMI La Crosse Vernon County, Salvation Army, La Crosse Public Library, City/County School Collaboration on a quarterly basis. Additional evidence, in developing the school district's long-range facility plan, the Superintendent met with the following groups and individuals to create a plan that had input from diverse views, and those are listed there. Indicator three, the district communicates emergency or safety notices, district school closings, delays, reminders of alternative schedules, and no school days, and translates these messages appropriately. Evidence includes weekly updates to all families and staff sent via email, school closings and delays on the district website were posted as needed, and reminders of alternative schedules and no school days were found on district calendars that were both the traditional and year-round. Indicator four, news releases and story ideas are submitted weekly to the local newspaper while school is in session. Evidence includes news articles were submitted to the local newspaper on a regular basis with many being published. Press releases were given for the following, and there's a list of items there. OE9.2, the Superintendent will prepare, publish, and publish on behalf of the Board an annual progress report to the public that includes the listed items A, B, and C. Indicator one, the Superintendent provides for the Board and all community stakeholders a link to the DPI link related to state-required student performance. Evidence includes the link on our website to those DPI district and school performance reports. Indicator two, the Superintendent shall make available to the Board and all community stakeholders a link to the district's annual adopted budget. The 2021 budget plan was made available to all community stakeholders at the link listed there. And the Superintendent shall post all Board of Education business, meeting agendas, meeting materials, and minutes on the district website in compliance with state open meetings law, and Board meetings were posted in accordance with state law on Board Docs. Our overall assessment is that the OE9 monitoring report demonstrates that communication with the public and key stakeholders meets the expectations of the Board as defined in OE9. Highlights include the regular communication with staff and parents, public engagement in the development of the long-range facility planning, and continual engagement with local news media. And that is my report, and happy to take any questions, comments, concerns.
Yep, any questions from the Board members? Ms. Baumann, do you have any questions? I just want to make sure I'm not moving too quickly.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'll try to talk slow because my Wi-Fi is pretty weak. So I guess on indicator two of 9.1, I think, you know, the indicators were approved already. But I think there is something that we're not maybe capturing in the report, just in light of, you know, the recent budget discussions we've had and the long-range facility plans. I recognize that these, you know, the evidence provided for the indicators maybe in this report shows that this is, you know, appropriate progress, but I think there is a piece of missing in how we're communicating with the public about some of these longer-term, very impactful things. I'm not sure exactly what the solution is. What kind of meetings would make sense or communication out to the public? There has been, you know, surprise for some of the plans that we have coming up, even though we have had meetings, and I just think reflecting on, you know, where we're dropping the ball on connecting with people would be important. I know for this report, it may not capture it, but I think kind of in light of recent budget facilities plans makes sense.
Thank you for that. I think it's a good point. I think in the end, anytime we have a project, I just think back to projects I've been involved in, and after-action review is always a good thing to do, right? It's always looking back and saying, where are there places where we can do better? I think that's what you're asking for, right? As we look forward, we should always look behind to see what did we do? How can we improve? Where can we do things better? I think communication is always one of those places where you can't ever over-communicate, but sometimes it feels like you are communicating effectively. Yeah, it's just one, I think it's one of those areas where we're trying to do our best, but there will always be challenges in trying to get that. But I think your point's well taken, and it's a good point to keep in mind as we move forward.
I can look at some additional indicators that we could potentially add to this at our next meeting that would capture some of those pieces and see what the Board thinks.
I would also just appreciate the feedback from Ms. Baumann, and when the opportunity comes before the Board again for us to consider those indicators before the next year of monitoring, that it would also be helpful, Ms. Baumann, if you have some thoughts on that too, or other Board members, when we do review that.
Yep. Thank you for that, Ms. Baumann. Did you have other thoughts? Yep. Thank you for that, Ms. Baumann. Did you have other thoughts? I'm going to take the long pauses and no, but feel free to chime in if you do. And I think the only thing I would add is that the operational expectations, the results policies, all of these are, excuse me, were created by the board as ways to ensure the effectiveness of the school district. These are the expectations of the board that we place on the administration, and these, we are asking for the evidence from the administration to ensure that they are meeting our expectations. And it is for the board to decide at this point in time whether the administration is meeting those expectations or not. So in that vein, this is when we ask the board to, again, a straw poll as to whether the board determines that we are meeting reasonable progress. Oh, excuse me, pardon me, not reasonable progress, that would be the results, but are we in compliance, is the administration in compliance with this operational expectation? Are we in compliance with any exceptions, or are we not in compliance? And from the comments that I'm hearing, I am going to assume that the board is feeling that we are in compliance, but I just want to hear from the board members, any concerns that we should be noting, or are we not in compliance at all in any locations here?
Based on the indicators that are provided here, they have been shown to be in compliance.
I'm not hearing any concerns from the other board members. Okay, so hearing none, then we will move forward with that. The official vote on this will take place at the next meeting, and we will move forward to the results monitoring report. R3.1 involves citizenship, and I believe Dr. Lahacki will be coming forward, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel.
That's correct. My results policies, we split up to kind of make them timely throughout the school year, and it's an opportunity for Dr. Lahacki to come back and brief us on results policy 3.1. Take it away, Dr. Lahacki.
Thank you. Results policy 3.1, understand and exercise the rights and responsibilities of citizenship in our democratic society. So this year, we have two indicators up from one. Let's start with the new one first. It is on the Wisconsin Forward exam, grades four, eight, and 10 are the grades that take the social studies portion of the exam. And within that, there are different components or categories. So the category closest to this results policy has to do with civic responsibility, and the indicator is scoring a three or four. In those grade levels, the percentage of students will increase or be greater than the state average. So three and four translates into proficient and advanced in descriptors. So what I'd like to do is skip to the summary page for fourth grade. We'll start there. I always feel like I'm doing a bit of time traveling when I do these reports to put things in context a little bit. So 2019, that was a typical school year, I would say, with our results for fourth grade. You could see overall, as a state or as a district, we're at 56.1% proficient and advanced, and then the state was 54.3%. 2020 was the pandemic year, so the exam was canceled altogether. So we don't, I don't have that data to share. And then in the next year was 2021, and that's when we just came back, if you remember. And one of the data pieces I'd like you to look at is the amount of students that took the exam in fourth grade in 2021 compared to 2019. And you can see it was 62 less students. Two factors for that, right? We do have declining enrollment, but we also had opt-outs. When students came back in that spring, many of them weren't ready for the Wisconsin Forward, and parents opted out. You may notice this year's exams are embargoed. So one of the things we'll have to think about is the timing of this particular report. If we keep the Wisconsin Forward indicator, to move it to a time of year where I can actually publicly release this data. It'll be released to the public in September and October, along with that state performance. So as long as it's after October, November, I'll be able to capture that data and be able to report the most, the latest data that we have to look at. If you look at eighth grade, you can see in 2019, we were about five percentage points below the state average. Back in our last reportable data, that was down to 1.4% overall. You can see we have some variance with the groups. We need at least 10 students in a particular category to report, and so there was times where we didn't have that with a particular reference group. But you can see a general trend. You could take almost any of our year's data for this social studies civic responsibility and see a general trend across the fourth, eighth, and 10th grade levels, I would say. And then in 10th grade, you can see in La Crosse, we were about 4.4% below the state average. And then in 2021, our last reportable data was 1.5. So we saw some growth there. Keep in mind, this is not the overall social studies scores, but rather one category. So I do recommend, if you really want to take a deep dive on data, there is a website called Wise Data, Wise-Dash-Public, and you can go there and filter in a lot of different ways, because all this data, this isn't hidden from anyone. So you'll be able to break this down and take a look at performance as well. You can look at longitudinal, as far back as you needed to go. You can also compare to other districts or however you want to look at that data. So that's where I go quite often, is that same website. So you can take a look at that. One thing I will say about the social studies exam for Wisconsin Forward is that our standards, our state standards, are very locally based. They're broad. They're more about critical thinking, analysis, application of learning. Social studies, a local curriculum. Well, we learn in La Crosse differs from Green Bay, just because of the local context. For example, we will purposely infuse a lot of our resources related to Enduring Families Project or our Ho Chong Nation, the river, the logging industry. Those contexts are here, whereas in the northern part of the state or the southeast part of the state, their social studies curriculum looks a little bit different. Therefore, when it goes to the exam, generally it's more broad. It has a strong correlation to a reading test, because the content is less and the critical analysis is more. So you can see a correlation between reading scores and social study scores. However, with that being said, because of this category and being so specific to this results policy, I still think it's a pretty good indicator. Plus, candidly, this is an opportunity where, within one year, all of a sudden we have all this longitudinal data to look at, whereas with some of our results indicators, we're building the ship as we go, year after year after year. Here, we can jump back to 2019, like it was yesterday. That's my information for indicator one. Do you have any questions regarding Wisconsin Forward?
Any questions from the board?
I do. Is our opt-out rate the same or about the same percentage across the state, or do we match the rest of the state, or do we not know?
Where we opt out less than the rest of the state. There are certain districts where it's almost a wink, wink, nudge, nudge, please opt out kind of experience. We generally have our students assessed.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Stoll.
And did you mention the most recent data would be available this fall?
Yes, yes. So when school report cards come out, that's like October, November, then all this data is publicly available. And it might be an opportunity, as I said, if we recalibrate when this results policy should come out, it'll give a chance to revisit with the lattice, latest social studies data as well. So we could take that opportunity as well. Another factor will be indicator two, which when I get to that, I'll explain why, that timing might be something to consider as well to find that we're just right spot for this particular results policy.
So given that, I would just ask that Dr. Jimenez think about, in terms of agenda planning, that instead of waiting a whole nother year, maybe we can...
I was actually, I was actually thinking about asking Dr. Lahacki. You were saying it usually comes out September, October. In your mind, do you think that maybe looking at this report again, say in January, and leaving it in that timeframe for us to review this data, would that be a better timeframe for us so that Ms. Stagerwald and I can ensure that it stays on our work plan at that time? Like, what would be the best time in your mind for us to ensure we have that data and we can have a good, robust conversation about it?
Well, certainly January, we'd have everything publicly available and reportable.
Sure.
My consideration would be results policy 3.1, indicator two, which is student voter registration.
Right.
So if we don't hit that right spot, then we're a year behind on that particular piece of data as well.
Right.
So I don't know. I don't know. I would have to look at all the results policies, because we'll have to take one and move it to another time of year.
Sure.
As well, because I don't think anyone wants two results policies in one particular month. I know I don't.
I was going to say, I mean, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do, but we also want to be conscious of the amount of effort it takes to prepare these reports as well. So maybe that would be helpful to maybe have that conversation about where can we fit this in best to ensure that, you know, we're getting the right data and we can actually talk about reasonable progress.
In other districts, when I reviewed their results policies, this isn't uncommon, though, to see that year lag, because you are taking a longitudinal approach to things to not jump when you see one particular data point to move so fast.
Sure.
Things happen, you know. We've just found out a little bit what can happen to data, and so that longitudinal approach would be beneficial, too.
Okay. So thank you for that, Dr. Cooper Stoll. Ms. Baumann, did you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to move on to the second indicator, Dr. Lahacki?
I do. Results policy 3.1, indicator two, is the percentage of students eligible voters are high schoolers that are registered voters in La Crosse County. So you can see in 2020-21, we had 25.1%. This last year, we had 24%. And you can see the number there of 275. That indicates that they had turned 18 prior to, I can't remember, maybe April 8th, or whenever the spring election was. So if they turned 18 the day before, they're considered in part of this report. I tried to do some, I really wanted to find a state comparison or a national comparison, but they generally, or all I could find was a grade or age band. So you'd see 18 to 24 with their voter participation rates, or 18 to 29. So I didn't see a good data for comparison for just 18-year-olds. With that said, let's look at some of the context here. In 2020-21, November of 2020, there was a presidential election, which is generally, really pushes out voter turnout. We did have some school board elections. The spring, we had school board. We had a mayor race, city council seats available. And then this upcoming spring, we've had a school board election, which, okay, safe audience here, but isn't necessarily the biggest driver as it is in a presidential election year. I don't think I'm overstating that. But in a non-presidential year, our data was pretty close. I think that's a pretty good indicator of the get out to vote work to get our students registered for that. I'd anticipate this upcoming, November of '22, we will have a spike again with some of the races that will be on the ballot, a governor and a senate race. In particular, will probably generate more votes. There's also a referendum vote, which may have some voters register early as well. Keep in mind, our 18-year-olds, not that many are 18 by the November. Generally, they hit that spring. So this data point may be more focused on what that spring driver might be. So at any rate, you can see the data between the two years, and it's relatively the same.
Yep. So I remember early on on the board, discussions from the community about the importance of voter registration, but can you remind us how this takes place? Is it something that students are doing online through a particular class, or?
Recommendations for the website to be able to access that. You know, it's different for different students, right? When you have your 18th birthday, you're eligible, so finding that just right time of year, generally right, you know, a couple of weeks before each of the election times will be time to say, hey, if you haven't registered yet, this is your time to do it.
So it's not assigned to a particular staff, or?
We've had some discussions of it, where does it fit best?
Yeah.
But senior year, like if we said social studies, many of our seniors don't take a social studies course, because it's not, four credits are required for graduation. So it has to be through electives, or it's just not as clean. I suppose we could look at a homeroom or advisor kind of experience as another way to get out to vote. I honestly feel that we'll have a pretty good drive in October and November this year with our students registering that are eligible.
Thank you.
Dr. Reston?
That was my same question. I just wondered if you set up tables in the cafeteria, or if there's like a couple of, maybe once each semester, but those are just ideas for what could happen. I don't know if that's what happens.
Ms. Baumann, did you have any questions? Hearing none. Anybody else? The only one, again, Dr. Lahacki, would be in terms of a timeframe that you think would be, would make the most sense. And not that you may have an answer now. That may be something for us to talk about in the future, but it just seems that, given where we're at right now, it may not be, as you said, the right time for us to be discussing this, given the fact that there's not a lot of data available for us to review at the current time, just the way that the data is being released. So that is something for us to consider as well as a board. So, given that, where does the board stand in terms of R3.1? So again, with results policies, this is, are we making reasonable progress towards achieving the desired results? And so the desired results being that we are either meeting, getting greater than the state average on the Wisconsin Forward, and that we have the percentage of eligible high school students registering to vote will increase over the prior year. Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Yeah, I think that particularly since we don't have the most recent data, based on the indicators that are here, I would be okay with in compliance, but with exceptions noted. And I know we've had to commonly do that recently, but that's where my comfort level is on that one.
And I would agree with that. Ms. Baumann, did you have any comments on that?
I think in compliance with exceptions noted makes sense for this one.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board members? Okay. Hearing none, then. I think that's where we will land, and so this, again, will come back at the next board meeting. So Dr. Lahacki, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll move on to 703. So again, just a reminder on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards resolutions, that if you have any ideas for resolutions for the WASB conference, to please get those to Ms. Stagerwald by August 11th, so we can review them at our August 15th board meeting. That will give us plenty of time to ensure that we get them approved by the board, by the September 15th board meeting. With that, we will move on to announcements, and I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Baumann, for the LPEF update.
So tonight, just real briefly, I'll remind the board that September 3rd is the low-time classic golf outing, and the raffle tickets will start going for sale soon. So that'll be coming up on your radar probably within the month. And that's all.
Thank you so much. At this point in time, I do not have any comments or announcements, so I will turn it over to Dr. Engel.
Just to offer up that, we have community info sessions for folks to learn about the referendum. We have the first on August 10th, a Wednesday, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Lincoln Middle School, and a second on Thursday, August 11th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Logan Middle School. And there will be more following thereafter, which we will have posted on our website and at the referendum website, and we will distribute those widely as well. So encourage people to come out, ask questions, learn more, so that they can make an informed decision on November 8th. That is all.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on to agenda planning. I could have a motion? I could have a motion?
I could motion to approve the August 15th, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved by Dr. Cooper-Stoll, and second by Ms. Leahy, to approve the August 15th, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion cast carried, and we will be adjourning to the workshop up in room 209. So thank you very much, everybody.